Great.
Ready? Good evening and welcome to our special meeting, November twenty fourth, it is seven oh one. And I guess we have two resolutions.
Moved by Harold Levine, second by Ted Brown, be it resolved that council for the township of Killu Hagerdean Richards hereby adopts the agenda for the special meeting of November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five as presented.
All those in favor? Carried.
Moved by Ted Brown, second by Bill Smith, whereas council for the township of Killu Hagerdean Richards recognizes the importance of transparency and public access in its decision-making process. And whereas live streaming public meetings provides community members with real-time access to proceedings, enhances civic engagement and ensures that individuals who cannot attend in person are still able to observe and remain informed. Whereas a special meeting scheduled for November twenty four, twenty twenty five concerns matters of significant public interest. Now therefore, be it resolved that the special meeting of November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five shall be livestreamed on the official YouTube channel of the township of Killu Hagerdean Richards.
All those in favor? Carried.
Okay, I will let you know when we're on.
Can I read my land acknowledgement now?
Um, no, because now it has to be live.
Do I start over?
Nope.
So just lead right into my land acknowledgement?
Ah, yeah. Oh goodness. Not taking the password. Okay, so I won't be able to livestream it, but I will be able to upload it. Yes. So I tried the both. So it will be uploaded tomorrow?
So I can start?
Yep.
I'd like to now read our First Nations land acknowledgement. As we gather today, I'd like to acknowledge on behalf of this committee and our community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Algonquin people. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history. And we are extremely grateful for their many continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. And please join me in a moment of silent reflection. And thank you. Does anyone have any pecuniary financial interests to declare? Now, we have no delegations, no minutes, no unfinished business. We'll move right into new business. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to our guests from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Mr. Alex Jones and Mr. Peter Sezoff. We appreciate you taking the time to meet with our council and staff this evening to help ensure we all have a clear and consistent understanding of the Strong Mayor framework and how it applies to our municipality. This session is an important opportunity for us to ask questions, receive guidance, and confirm our respective roles and responsibilities under the current legislation. Thank you again for being here and for supporting our efforts to move forward with clarity and confidence. With that, I will turn the meeting over to you to start the session.
Okay, thank you. So our presentation you have in front of you, I believe, and Tammy, if you can pull up the slide to be shown virtually, I guess, tomorrow. I'll begin by presenting the different Strong Mayor powers and then I'll pass over the mic to my colleague Peter to go over some resources. So, so as Mayor Mayville mentioned, my name is Alexander Jones. I'm a municipal advisor from the Eastern Municipal Services Office. I'm joined with by Peter Sezav, our senior municipal advisor in the office. And we're here to deliver a presentation on Strong Mayor powers, as you know. So we'll strictly be sticking to the content of our presentation tonight. If you have any questions, you can ask them at the end. We won't be answering them live. We'll be taking them down and then providing a written response at a later date that you can use as a reference. So that's the way that's going to work this evening. Um, so I don't know, I can't see if you have it showing live the slide, but I'm going to move on to the second slide. So as I mentioned, we'll start with an overview of the Strong Mayor Powers Framework. You should be seeing the agenda right now. Following the overview of the legislative information, as I mentioned already, Peter will present some resources that are available to help municipalities as they implement the Strong Mayor Powers Framework. So we'll move past to the disclaimer slide. So before we begin, I must provide this disclaimer. The information provided in this presentation is not a substitute for specialized legal or professional advice. This presentation is intended to provide an overview of the Strong Mayor Framework and provides a summary of complex matters. This presentation reflects laws and practices that are subject to change. And implementation is a local responsibility and municipalities should seek their own legal advice and interpretation regarding specific situations. Lawyers are experts at interpreting legislation. Their guidance is a valuable tool for municipalities, especially when navigating new legislation. It is advisable that council members, including the head of council, pay heed to the advice they receive from legal professionals. Move on to the next slide here. Should be on the title page, overview of the Strong Mayor Powers Framework. And then just skip right along to slide number five. Some context which may or may not be of interest, but as far as Killu Hagerdean Richards is concerned, it's the last box on the right where you became a player in the Strong Mayor Powers Framework. So as you know, in some municipalities, including your own, the head of council has additional powers and duties known as Strong Mayor Powers and Duties. The details are set out in the Strong Mayor Powers Framework in legislation and regulations outlined in the graphic. So we don't need to go through all the steps, but as of May first, as I mentioned, the last box on the right signifies where Killu Hagerdean Richards got Strong Mayor Powers. Councils of less than six members have not received Strong Mayor Powers. Some question whether a council's designation as Strong Mayor municipality would be revoked if its composition was reduced to a five-member council. So council size and composition are determined locally. Municipalities may increase or decrease their council size before each council term. And there is currently no mechanism under the Municipal Act that designates Strong Mayor municipalities based on council size. It is rather that the six-member threshold is a provincial policy decision which is implemented through the list of designated municipalities in Ontario Regulation five thirty twenty-two. And we can skip onto the next slide and get into the separate powers. I'm on slide six here. I can't see what what may be shared there, but.
We are on side six.
Right, okay. So the Strong Mayor Powers Framework identifies nine specific powers. So there are nine individual powers. You can look at them individually. Given the head of councils, uh, these were given to the heads of councils of Toronto and two hundred and fifty other designated municipalities. So the first power is that the head of council in a strong municipality can choose to appoint and dismiss the municipality's chief administrative officer, C A O, in municipalities where a C A O structure exists. So uh, yeah, so note that the C A O position is a discretionary position for all municipalities, i.e. it is not considered a statutory position. Those statutory positions include the clerk, treasurer, integrity commissioner, chief of police, chief building official, medical officer of health, and others set out in the legislation. It is not mandatory that this power be used. It is optional. And the head of council has the ability to choose to delegate this power back to council. So in a strong municipality, the powers of a municipality under section two twenty-nine of the Municipal Act with respect to the C A O are assigned to the head of council. To clarify that, it's not to say that so that is to say that council's powers with respect to the C A O are assigned to the head of council and not that the C A O powers are assigned to them. So the second power is that a strong mayor has the ability to hire municipal division heads and change the municipality's organizational structure. Using this, the head of council may hire or dismiss certain municipal division heads, excluding those which are set out in the legislation, so the clerk, treasurer, et cetera, and other officers or heads of divisions required to be appointed under statute example, that chief of police, chief building official, medical officer of health, the ones I listed earlier. The head of council can also choose to create and reorganize the structure of the municipality. When making any changes to the organizational structure of the municipality, the head of council and municipality are subject to legal requirements, including any terms in existing collective agreements or contracts which may apply. So once again, this is another power that is not mandatory, but it is optional. And the head of council has the ability to choose to delegate this, these powers to the council or municipality's C A O if one is appointed. Many municipalities appoint the same person as C A O and the clerk, and it may be helpful to clarify how the head of council is able to use their strong mayor powers with respect to a person appointed to both roles. The head of council can choose to appoint their municipality's C A O and can hire, fire certain municipal division heads, excluding statutory positions, as I've already said, such as the clerk or deputy clerk. This means that while the head of council has the authority to appoint the C A O, council retains the authority to appoint the clerk. Third, strong mayors can also establish committees of council and appoint the committee chairs and vice chairs. The functions of these committees can also be assigned by the mayor. Using this power, the head of council can create new committees of council made under the Municipal Act where all members are council members and assign their functions. So the clarification there was for committees of council made under the Municipal Act where all members are council members. The head of council is also able to appoint the chairs and vice chairs of such committees, as I've just described. And once again, the head of council has the ability to choose to delegate these committee-related powers back to council for this one can be delegated back to council. Again, it's an optional power. It's not necessary to be used. The fourth strong mayor power is that they may also appoint the chair and vice chair of prescribed boards. Under the Municipal Act, the head of council has the power to appoint the chairs and vice chairs of prescribed local boards or classes of local boards. Now, this power can only be used if a minister's regulation prescribes local boards, and given that the current minister's regulations do not prescribe any local boards, this power in particular cannot be used. And I will now change slides, slide seven. Certain strong mayor powers are related to provincial priorities. So these are the powers to bring forward matters, bring matters forward for council consideration, propose municipal bylaws, and veto all are part of a municipal bylaw. The prescribed provincial priorities include building one point five million new residential units by December thirty-one, two thousand thirty-one, and supporting infrastructure related to housing, including transit roads and servicing. So like I said, the next three powers I'll go through directly relate to these prescribed provincial priorities. This strong mayor power allows heads of council to bring forward matters for council consideration if they are of the opinion that the considering the matter could potentially advance a provincial priority. When bringing forward such a matter for council consideration, the head of council should consider whether any rules with respect to notice and public consultation apply to the exercise of a particular municipal authority. Six, the head of council can propose certain municipal bylaws if they are of the opinion that the proposed bylaw could potentially advance a provincial priority identified in regulation. It is important to clarify how voting thresholds are calculated in a strong mayor municipality and specifically with regard to this power. Bylaws proposed by the head of council using this power are passed if more than one third of all council members vote in favor of the bylaw. And the head of council is also able to vote on this bylaw. So for example, in a six-member council, if the head of council uses the strong mayor bylaw proposal power, they require at least three council members to vote in favor to meet the more than one-third threshold. So more than one third. When using this power, the head of council can only propose bylaws made under the Municipal Act, the City of Toronto Act, the Planning Act, or section two of the Development Charges Act. The head of council must provide a copy of the proposed bylaw and their reasons for the proposal to the clerk and each member of council. The head of council can require council to consider and vote on the proposed bylaw at a meeting, despite any rules in a local procedure bylaw. But the mayor will have to provide reasons as to how this proposed bylaw advances a provincial priority. Municipal procedure bylaws and bylaws related to filling council vacancy on council are excluded from this power. The last power related to provincial priorities provides a strong mayor the ability to veto certain bylaws if they are of the opinion that all are part of the bylaw could potentially interfere with the provincial priority identified in the regulation. Only bylaws made under the Municipal Act, the City of Toronto Act, the Planning Act, and section two of the Development Charges Act here once again, may be vetoed by the head of council. The head of council must provide written notice of their intent to consider vetering the bylaw on or before two days after council voted in favor of the bylaw. If the head of council decides to use their veto within fourteen days after the day council voted in favor of the bylaw, the head of council must provide a written veto document, which includes the veto and reasons for the veto to the clerk on the day they use the veto power. The clerk must then share the written document with each member of council by the next business day and make the written document available to the public. Note that within twenty-one days after the clerk provides the written veto document to the members of council, council may override the head of council veto if two-thirds of council members vote to do so. For example, if a six-member council would want to override a mayor's veto, it would require four members to vote in favor of doing so. During this process, the head of council remains as a member of council for council decision-making with one vote. Next slide, please. Slide eight. And going on to the eighth power. The eighth strong mayor power is that they can propose the municipal budget and in-year budget amendments, which would be subject to council amendments and a separate mayoral veto and council override process. So I'll cover that in more detail shortly. The power to oppose the budget, the ninth power I'll speak to first, the ninth and final strong mayor power is that they can direct staff to do certain things if they're related to their additional powers and duties. So that's important to, there's that caveat that it's with relation to the pursuit of these powers and duties. When a head of council directs municipal staff to do certain things related to their strong mayor powers and duties, they must do so in writing and are required to provide written documentation to the municipal clerk and C A O if one is appointed by the next business day. The head of council is also subject to rules in the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act that limit the use of their power, their strong mayor powers or duties when they have a certain pecuniary interests in a municipal matter. If the head of council is prohibited from preparing aspects of the budget due to a financial interest, the council can pass a resolution to amend the budget to address the matter. The head of council cannot veto these amendments in that case. Again, council can override a head of council's veto of a bylaw, of bylaws or budget amendments if two-thirds of all council members vote to override the veto. Occasionally municipalities have asked if a strong mayor is required to approve a bylaw that had council support for it to be passed by the municipality. The Strong Mayor Framework does not require heads of council to approve bylaws for them to be passed. However, there may be special commencement rules for certain bylaws under the Municipal Act, Planning Act, and section two of the Development Charges Act. So the next slide, if we can skip to that, slide nine, it shows a chart of the budget process in a strong area municipality. So the strong mayor budget process framework follows along this flow chart. In a strong municipality, the powers and duties of a municipality with respect to proposing and adopting a budget are assigned to the head of council of the municipality. The budget includes estimates of all sums required during the year for the purposes of the municipality, which may include amounts required for boards, commissions, or other bodies. Each strong mayor municipality may adapt local processes and procedures that best respond to the municipality's local needs and circumstances. For example, the head of council and the municipality may work together to establish local processes for council to provide input and to seek public input in relation to the strong mayor budget. Outside of the Strong Mayor Powers Framework, municipal councils may continue to exercise other powers of the municipality that relate to or impact the municipality's spending. In a strong mayor municipality, the head of council has the responsibility to prepare, propose the municipal budget on or before February first of each year. This process is subject to council amendments, as mentioned, and a separate head of council veto, followed by a council override process. The head of council must share the proposed budget with each member of council and the municipal clerk and make it available to the public. It is important to note that if the head of council does not propose the budget by February first, council must prepare and adopt the budget. The decision tree on the slide outlines how the budget process could proceed if the head of council proposes a budget by February first. At the first step, after receiving the proposed budget from the head of council, council can amend the proposed budget by passing a resolution within a thirty-day review period. Note that council may shorten this thirty-day review period by passing a resolution to do so. Council does not propose amendments to the budget and the review period passes, the budget is deemed adopted. If council proposes amendments, the head of council in turn has ten days from the end of the council review period to veto any council amendments. The head of council may shorten this review period by providing documentation to members of the count of council and the municipal clerk. If the head of council wishes to veto a council amendment, the head of council must provide written documentation of the veto and rationale to each member of council and the municipal clerk on the day of the veto. If the mayor does not exercise their veto power and the timeline passes for the veto, then the budget as amended by council would be deemed adopted. Finally, council may override the head of council's veto if he makes one. Up to fifteen days following the end of the head of council's veto period, council may override some or all of the head of council's vetoes if two-thirds of all of council members vote in favor. Again, this period can be shortened by a council resolution. At the end of this process, the resulting budget is adopted by the municipality. It is worth mentioning that there is a similar but separate process for the head of council to propose in-year budget amendments to raise additional amounts from property tax. Municipal councils continue to be responsible for exercising other powers of the municipality that relate to or impact the municipality's finances, such as passing tax rate bylaws, which happen after the budget process is finished. So for the purposes of raising the municipality's general and special levies, a local municipality must pass a bylaw levying a separate tax rate on the assessment in each property class ratable for the levy's respective purpose. This authority sits outside of the strong mayor framework. Given the upcoming municipal election and the desire to prepare a budget early for good fiscal management, municipalities may wish to start putting plans, procedures, and timelines in place that will facilitate the twenty twenty-six municipal budget process. Next slide, please. Slide ten. Delegation of strong mayor powers. While the head of council can delegate certain strong mayor powers, the legislation and regulations limit who these powers can be delegated to. Certain strong mayor powers may be delegated back to council or to the C A O. As you can see from the diagram on this slide, strong mayors can delegate their power to appoint or dismiss a C A O as well as their committee-related powers to council. Back to council, if you will. They can also delegate their power to hire or dismiss certain division heads, as well as their power to change the organizational structure of the municipality to the C A O or to council. They have no requirement to retain them for themselves. The scope of the delegation, including the term, will depend on the specifics of each particular delegation. When delegating their powers, the head of council could explore whether the delegation should provide that it is revoked at the end of their term or whether it continues after a municipal election. The strong mayor framework provides no ability for the head of council to delegate the strong mayor powers to a deputy head of council. In the case of a head of council vacancy or absence, strong mayor powers do not transfer to an interim or acting head of council. In the case of a vacancy, once a new head of council has been elected pursuant to a by-election, that person will be the head of council and be able to exercise the strong mayor powers and duties. It is ultimately up to the head of council to decide whether to delegate certain strong mayor powers to council and/or the C A O, and strong mayors have the authority to revoke prior delegations. Slide eleven, please. Just to wrap up my section here. Municipalities have the broad authority to determine their governance structure and maintain oversight over local policies and procedures. As part of their oversight of governance processes and practices, municipalities may wish to regularly review all council reports and decisions in the context of any locally developed strategic plans and local policy frameworks to ensure alignment and inform future decision-making and budgeting. So with that, I'll pass it over to Peter to begin to speak of some of the resources available.
Thank you so much, Alex. So starting on slide twelve, resources. We just wanted to say that with the overview complete, it's now time to look at some resources available to staff and council with the implementation of strong mayor powers. Next slide, please. So first of all, the municipal councillors' guide, which has been amended to include strong mayor power information, continues to be an important resource for council members and staff alike and is available online free of charge for anyone to access. This guide includes examples and plain language overviews of various legislative topics, including now the strong mayor powers. It's also an excellent resource to share with members of the public who are looking for summarized information on this topic, that being strong mayor powers or other legislation applicable to municipalities. Specifically, the strong mayor power content can be found in chapter ten of the Ontario Municipal Councillors' Guide. The guide aside, you may also want to consult the legislation directly by visiting the Municipal Act two thousand one. A fast and quick source of the act is E-Laws online. And by looking at the special power and duties of the head of council section, which is, I believe, part six point one. You may also want to consult the legislation and the regulations associated with that legislation concerning strong mayor powers. And specifically, we're looking at Ontario Regulation five eighty twenty-two and Ontario Regulation five thirty twenty-two. So to recap, the guide is a great summarized source of information, but the legislation, of course, is key. Next slide, please. Generally, when the head of council uses their strong mayor powers or duties, they are required to provide written documentation to the municipal clerk and members of council by the next business day. They must also make this written documentation available to the public. Many municipalities have opted to post decisions on a dedicated section of their municipal website for public convenience and in alignment with existing accountability and transparency policies. For examples of how strong mayor powers have been used in these municipalities, you may wish to access their websites directly. So the next couple of slides, we're going to look at sample municipal websites that capture strong mayor power information, specifically strong mayor directives or decisions. And as Alex mentioned earlier, we have to provide a quick disclaimer. Essentially, the examples are for information purposes only. And it's very important for me to underline this point that the ministry is not commenting on whether the purported use of strong mayor powers in those municipalities was done in accordance with the legislation and regulations. So it's just sample information for your awareness. Next slide, please. So the first website comes from the town of Ajax. And they display the strong mayor power information in the access to information page of their website. And this particular municipal website shows summary of legislative authority associated with the directives. Next slide. Then we have the city of Guelph. And this website is also kind of interesting because they provide links to PDF copies of each decisions for the public to open and review to maximize transparency. And the subject matter is listed for each decision, just to make things even clearer. Next slide, please. Next, we have the city of Hamilton. And they display this type of information in their council and committee area of the website. And like with many websites that cover the subject matter, the information is organized by year of decision. Next slide. Now is an example from our own catchment area in eastern Ontario. Just west of Kingston, we have Loyalist Township. And the interesting thing about Loyalist Township's website is they go above and beyond some of the more baseline approaches that you've seen earlier. And they actually have a frequently asked questions section on their website about strong mayor powers, which adds another layer of information for the public. Especially if residents have questions about how the strong mayor powers work and want to learn a little bit more about this without necessarily going to the legislation or the counselor's guide, Loyalist has FAQs on their website for that purpose, and it's clear, accessible information. Next slide, please. Now, the city of Barry has distinct lists for mayoral decisions and mayoral directions. The important thing here is that while there is no requirement to make directions to staff available to the public, mayors may wish to provide this information to the public at their discretion to support transparency. So it's all about removing any confusion around the subject matter and making things as transparent as possible. So at this stage, if we turn to the next slide, slide twenty. Before we talk about questions, we just wanted to reiterate that since implementation of the strong mayor powers is a local responsibility, municipalities should seek their own legal advice and interpretation regarding specific local situations. So the different local scenarios that may exist in the specific municipality. The ministry does not review or provide feedback to municipalities regarding their mayoral directives prepared under the strong mayor framework. And the reason for this is that the interpretation of the legislation is subject to judicial determination and falls within the jurisdiction of the courts. So before we turn the floor over to questions, we actually wanted to take you to Appendix One in this slide deck. We actually have seventeen frequently asked questions in this resource available for municipalities to see because some of these questions come up fairly often across municipalities. So maybe some of your questions are addressed already in the appendix. But specific questions that we wanted to focus on are, for example, question two on slide twenty-four. So the question on the slide, if you turn to it, is if a municipality reduces their council composition to five members, will their designation as a strong mayor municipality be revoked? Alex actually touched on this briefly during his part of the presentation, but just to kind of recap, council size and composition is determined locally, and municipalities may increase or decrease their council size before each council term. There is currently no mechanism under the Municipal Act that designates strong mayor municipalities based on council size. Rather, the six-member threshold is a provincial policy decision, which is implemented through the list of designated municipalities by regulation. So if a municipality changes the size of their council, the minister may change their designation as a strong mayor municipality. It's a bit more nuanced. Turning to the next question on slide twenty-five, question three. This is also an interesting question that's often asked. Are there any limitations or checks on the mayor's authority, on a strong mayor's authority? So the answer to this question, the head of council in strong mayor municipalities is subject to existing accountability and transparency rules, as well as certain additional rules. Generally speaking, when the head of council uses their strong mayor powers or duties, they are required to provide written documentation to the municipal clerk and members of council by the next business day. They must also make this written documentation available to the public, and written documentation requirements vary with respect to some of the powers and duties. Additionally, when a head of council directs municipal staff to do certain things related to their strong mayor powers and duties, they must do so in writing and are required to provide written documentation to the municipal clerk and chief administrative officer if one is appointed by the next business day. If we turn to the next slide, Part Two for question three. It's also important to note that the head of council is also subject to rules in the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act that limit the use of strong mayor powers or duties when they have certain pecuniary or financial interests in a municipal matter. And council also has the ability to override a head of council's veto or bylaws or budget amendments if two thirds of all council members vote to override the veto. Next, we'd like to bring your attention to question seven on slide thirty-one, if we can skip to that slide. And this question is as follows. The Municipal Act clearly assigns the power of a municipality to appoint a chief administrative officer to the head of council. So do strong mayors have the authority to dismiss the CIO? And the answer is yes. In a strong mayor municipality, the powers of the municipality under the Municipal Act Section 229 with respect to the CIO or chief administrative officer are assigned to the head of council. So subject to local circumstances, including existing contracts or collective agreements, a strong mayor has the authority to appoint or dismiss the municipality's CIO. Now let's move on to question eleven on slide thirty-six. And this question is as follows. Does a head of council's delegation of powers reset after the municipal election or by-election? And the answer is the head of council may choose to delegate certain strong mayor powers. So the scope of the delegation, including the term, will depend on the specifics of each particular delegation. When delegating their powers, the head of council could explore whether the delegation should provide that it's revoked at the end of their term or whether it continues after the municipal election. Question twelve on the following slide, slide thirty-seven, is an interesting one because we are getting so close to the municipal election in a sense, next year. And it asks, how do restricted acts provisions apply to strong mayor municipalities? So the answer here is that in a strong mayor municipality, certain powers and/or duties of the council are assigned to the head of council. So as such, any powers or duties of council that are assigned to the head of council are subject to the restricted acts provisions in the Municipal Act. And of course, the City of Toronto Act if we're talking about Toronto. So municipalities that are unsure of how restricted acts provisions apply to a specific situation in their municipality are, of course, encouraged to seek legal advice. And then next, and the final question that we wanted to share with you is on slide thirty-eight, question thirteen. And it talks about something very topical. With respect to the upcoming 2026, 2030, rather, municipal term, it's anticipated that newly elected strong mayors will face a compressed timeline for preparing the municipal budget. What advice or support does the ministry have for municipalities who will face challenges in meeting the February first strong mayor budget deadline? So we're hearing a lot of questions about this from municipalities, and so we thought it would be timely to share this with you as well, the answer. The response is, of course, municipalities may wish to start putting plans, procedures, and timelines in place that will facilitate the 2026 municipal budget process. They may also wish to review and update existing policies and procedures to ensure alignment with the strong mayor framework. And the implementation of the strong mayor framework, of course, is a local matter. It's up to the head of council, council and municipality to implement that framework in accordance with legislation and the regulations. In practice, this means that each strong mayor municipality may adapt local processes and procedures that best respond to the municipality's local needs and circumstances. And of course, this is the answer we give in most cases when we discuss the strong mayor power framework. There's so much local customization when it comes to this legislation. So this goes back to Alex's earlier comment at the start of the presentation. The way we want to handle questions today, if we jump back to slide twenty, is to basically invite council to pose their questions. We will write those questions down. We will not respond to those questions today because we want to make sure that we take your questions because we understand strong mayor powers, it's a very important topic, very nuanced. We want to take your questions back and work with our policy colleagues to ensure that we provide you with very thought-out, clear responses in writing that you can refer to in the future. So that's the approach we're planning to take today. And at this point, I'd like to, on behalf of Alex and I, thank you for listening to us tonight. We talked about a lot of material, and now we invite your questions.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start with going around the room, if you don't mind. We'll start with questions. Tyler? Kim? Shirley? Brian? Carl? Ted?
Yeah, my question is, multiple times in the presentation, it says that we should get legal advice. And I'm just wondering, because we've got, on quite a few occasions, we have got legal advice, and our mayor says that that's just their opinion and basically that he knows more than our lawyer does. So my question is, how do we deal with that?
So thank you for that question. Through your worship, we can just say that, of course, we did stress this in the presentation. This is a local decision, and it's very important to note that because the implementation of the strong mayor framework and the interpretation of the legislation is subject to judicial determination, it's very important for municipalities to get their own legal advice, to listen to that legal advice. But of course, what happens next is within the municipality's power. Because as the legislation provides, municipalities are responsible and accountable, local governments that have the authority to make decisions about topics that fall within their jurisdiction, including the implementation of legislation. That being said, we've noted your question. We will go back to our policy colleagues and we will provide you with a response in writing afterwards.
Thank you.
Ted, do you have a follow-up? Do you have a follow-up? No, you're good. Maureen?
I have a question about, so in there, there's just some muddled language about the mayor kind of being a CEO, but our mayor takes that to mean that he is a literal CEO of our township. So I think that's something we definitely need some clarification on because I don't think that's what the intended language in the strong mayor, I don't think that's what the intention of that language is. And so can I start with that one? I don't know if you have any response to that?
Thank you for that question, through your worship. Just reiterating our earlier comments, we've noted this question down. We will provide you with a more fulsome response. But in the meantime, we will also remind council that in the Ontario Counselors Guide that we referenced, these topics are discussed. They're foundational governance topics relating to governance administration in a municipality. And that particular subject matter is addressed in high-level terms, of course. That being said, we will come back with a written response that maybe provides a little bit more detail. But in the meantime, everyone is welcome to look at the Ontario Municipal Counselors Guide. The first few chapters deal specifically with this type of subject matter.
Okay, my second one is kind of a statement and kind of a question, but I wonder if the province will be covering the legal fees and court fees associated with fighting strong mayor powers because a small municipality like ours doesn't really have the funds to continue this fight. And it's exhausting and it's financially draining. So I would like you to take that forward to the higher-ups because, yeah, this is not a fight that we wanted to have. So I appreciate you coming, but just know this is an awful situation you've put small municipalities like ours in.
Through your worship, oh, sorry, through your worship, thank you for that comment. We will certainly take it back and communicate it up the line and provide you with a response.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, I have three questions. The first one is just an expansion on, or a different take on Maureen's question about the mayor being the chief executive officer. And just, I know you're going to respond to that in writing. But what our mayor has suggested various, at various different times, it shifts. But that as chief executive officer, at one point in the conversation, he said he was in charge of all administrative processes in the township. So I'd like your response to reference that. And more recently, he said all legislative processes are, meaning how council is governed. I believe he meant how council is governed, are his responsibility as the chief executive officer. So if your written response could provide some clarity on those points about chief executive officer, my understanding is that he acts, or that the mayor acts as chief executive officer for four different things that are listed out in the Municipal Act. So there seems to be a bit of a disconnect there. My second one is that I understand that the mayor or a strong mayor has the ability to appoint and dismiss a CIO, chief administrative officer. But I believe that, this is my belief, that our mayor believes that that means that the CIO reports directly to the mayor and not to council. My understanding from the Municipal Act is that the CIO reports directly to council and not to one member of council. So I'd like some clarification on that. And I guess the third one has already been covered a little bit. But, and it's regarding, I believe you use the term, it's judicial process for this to be so. Essentially, if our mayor chooses not to follow the expert advice of the lawyers, and you've said in your opening remarks, Alex, that we should be following expert advice of lawyers. But if our mayor, strong mayor chooses not to do that, is our only... But if our mayor, strong mayor chooses not to do that, is our only avenue to go to court to seek a legal or a judge's decision? So if you could expand on those three.
Thank you, through your worship, yes. We will note that those questions and sub-questions, and we'll provide something to you in writing. And just, just one quick comment. Generally speaking, when our offices contacted, even by ratepayers, and they ask about enforcement of bylaws or who's responsible for enforcement, and yes, this is a very general comment, but typically, we mention the local process for addressing a complaint. But at the end of the local process, we often mention that one option is to retain legal counsel because at that stage, if all the local processes are exhausted, the ratepayer has spoken to council, they've gone maybe to the Ontario Ombudsman about something, but they've exhausted all those approaches. What could they do next? And oftentimes, we recommend that the individual seek legal counsel because at that stage, it can escalate to a higher level. In other words, the courts potentially. So it's a general answer. There are many unique scenarios out there, so we don't want to make it sound like that's the answer to all questions, but that's, it's a general response to that type of inquiry. But we will provide you with something in writing that kind of expands on that.
Thank you, Peter. And yeah, we have gone to the, we have sought legal advice. We have retained a lawyer, more than one lawyer, to provide advice and guidance on this. So, thanks.
Harold?
I think enough has been asked here, especially about the legal advice and that it seems like our mayor knows more about the law as well as the integrity commissioner and just disagrees with what they come out with the truth. So I don't know how much more we can do with the legal stuff. It's cost us a fortune as it is now.
Thank you for sharing that comment. We will take that back with us.
We're back on the second round.
I'm just reading the summary of strong mayor powers and duties, part two. The powers are subject to prescribed provincial priorities, which building 1.5 million new residential units by December 2031, constructing, maintaining infrastructure, support housing, transit roads, utilities. Where are we going to build new homes in our area? We don't have nowhere to build, and we don't have the utilities to support them. What, why are we getting this? Sorry.
Through your worship, thank you for the comment. We will take it back.
Brian, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah. My question is on the veto powers of council. You mentioned a few times in your report there about, so two-thirds of council can veto the head of council on most decisions. Is that true for all decisions that are made? Is it two-thirds of council? Council still gets a say, or what is the real answer?
Through your worship, thank you for that question. So there are a few nuances there. We will provide you with specific examples in our written response because it depends. I mean, it's a general answer for now.
To the veto. So when a veto is used, that's when the override clause would kick in, not for every use of power now.
But of course, we will provide something in writing as a reference because sometimes it helps to have that in your back pocket.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Anybody else have any other questions?
I'm just wondering what the timeline might be for the responses to all these questions to come back to us in writing?
Of course.
How long are up to you?
Thank you. So through your worship, the response to that question is, we hope to get something back to you very soon. We will do our best this week to work on it this week. We can't commit to a firm timeline because we have to consult with our policy colleagues, and these questions are very important and nuanced. And we want to make sure we provide very thoughtful responses. So we're hoping by the end of this week, but if it takes a little bit longer, that we apologize for the delay right away because, again, we know this is very important information, and we want to do our due diligence to ensure that you're getting the best information possible.
Bill?
It's an expansion on one of my earlier questions regarding the CEO powers. But I'm wondering, can you comment in your written answers about control of the agenda? So for meetings, our mayor has issued a directive, a strong mayor directive regarding what gets to go on to an agenda, that it's him who has the authority to say yes or no to agenda items, including deciding what new business gets raised, and therefore, by extension, what resident complaints are allowed to be brought to the table. So if you could comment on that, that would be appreciated.
So through your worship, we will definitely take that back and discuss that internally and get back to you with an answer. But in the meantime, we also want to manage expectations and reiterate that questions that relate to specific municipal directives, strong mayor directives or decisions, this is an area where the ministry does not comment or provide advice. So just to manage expectations, we may not be able to get into too many specifics, but we'll see what we can do.
I can rephrase the question. Thank you, Peter. I can rephrase the question. Does the strong mayor powers give the mayor authority to control agendas? So that has nothing to do with a directive? That's just a simple question?
Thank you for the clarification. So we'll note that when we're researching the answer.
Okay, okay. Okay, my first question is, can the ministry outline the administrative responsibilities assigned to the mayor as CEO under section 225 and section 226.1? That's my first question. Second is, if our procedural bylaw predates the strong mayor amendments, does the provincial legislation prevail where there is a conflict?
Thank you, your worship. We just noted those questions. We'll look at those.
And number three, I have a couple more.
Of course.
And number three, how does the strong mayor framework get implemented into the procedural bylaw? And part B of that question is, in the meantime, what prevails? Number, next one. Did the ministry outline the administrative responsibilities assigned specifically to the mayor as CAO under sections 225 and 226.1, and how this relates to the CAO's reporting structure? Do you guys take shorthand, or are you okay with that?
Oh, we're making sure to capture every detail.
Okay. For the record, certain legal opinions have suggested that my directives are invalid. I'd appreciate the ministry's clarification. Under the Municipal Act and Oreg 53022, does a lawyer's disagreement affect the legal validity of a properly issued mayoral directive? And I think this will be my last one. Again, it ties into the agenda, a question that councillor Smith had asked. Could the ministry clarify the mayor's authority over agenda contact under part 6.1 of the Municipal Act, and whether council can override or remove an item that the mayor has placed properly on an agenda through a simple majority resolution?
Thank you.
And I think that's it for me. Does anyone else have anything else? Having seen no other questions, thank you for your clarity this evening. I appreciate the ministry's guidance and the focus on the legislation. And thank you again.
Thank you, your worship and council.
I think that's it.
Thank you.
We're good? Oh, yeah. Okay. Confirming bylaw. And those of the motion.
Moved by Brian Pukowski, seconded by Ted Brown, motion to adjourn the special meeting of November 24, 2025, for the township of Killoo, Hagerty and Richards.
All those in favor? Carry it.